So Sean Wazworth calling the March 10. Albany Planning Board meeting to order at 6:36. And I'm gonna appoint Amalia Torres, alternate, as a voting member for this meeting. And let's just go around and introduce Curtis Schoolman.
Brian Bailey.
Jim Groon.
Cindy Smart.
Judy Martin.
Thank you.
Amalia Torres.
Thank you. And then we'll just go to the business at hand, which is Rudy and Smart's application received, received by me on March 4th, for voluntary parcel lot merger of 92-2 and 92-3. 10.1 acres and 0.45 acres. So the scenario we have is subdivided and then application for merger. And let's see, we had a preliminary consultation at the last meeting, so not all of us were here for that. So if you wouldn't mind going through the general overview again.
Here's, well, I have the sketch that you did, Peter, right?
Sean, you have that PDF that, yeah, you had it last time.
Yes.
Excellent, you did.
Basically, all we want to do is to apply eventually for a building permit to put a house on the cul-de-sac, which is no longer used by anyone. And but we wanted to consult with the planning board first because we know there's a complicated history here. And if we just ask the selectmen about it, they probably won't know what the town were thinking of it all.
Yeah, so by background, we purchased the two subdivision lots. There are lots one and two on the tax map and the cul-de-sac. Those are three separate lots of record. And we own the land to the north going up to the top of Bald Hill in this direction. Our access to all of that is a long aviation drive here. And then we have a driveway that comes up here, not shown on this plan. And we have deeded rights to use aviation drive to access that acreage as well as to these three lots out here. And so target, as Judy's saying, is we would like to obtain a building permit for this vicinity. And towards that end, we'd like to merge lot two and three. And just a heads up that the lot numbers are different between the plan, subdivision plan and the tax numbering. This lot three is not the lot three I'm talking about. Tax maps refer to lots one, two, and three named cul-de-sac. So there's just some confusion. So the request is to merge the cul-de-sac with lot two. And allow us, that would eliminate the internal setback requirement for building that would now be required off the cul-de-sac boundary. And our key to that is that there is no one else with deeded rights to use the cul-de-sac. The various lot owners have rights to use aviation drive as far as their property. But we're the owners of the actual cul-de-sac as a separate lot. And as I say, no one else has got any deeded rights to use that. This is not a town road. There's never been an application to make it a town road. Am I missing anything?
No.
That's, that's the request? So this, Sean's got up with the sketch we brought in last time. They're explaining a little bit of the usage. It's complicated because there are multiple parcels and the rights of way were conveyed at half a dozen different points of time.
I have a question, yes, man. Are you planning to put like a fence blocking the people to walk around there or no?
No, we're not planning excluding anyone beyond there being a building there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But no, in fact, one of our, well, the reason behind this is we would like to live on the trails. We maintain now seven and a half miles of trail on Bald Hill. Groon Ski Trail that extends around to what used to be the Dogby Field Inn and Tin Mountain Conservation Center. And rather than driving up there every single snowstorm of Groom, we would like to live on the trails. That's, that's the goal. We've looked at a number of options around the property, but it is a hill, so there's very little flat ground available. And rather than terracing into more wet hillside, we have a flat cul-de-sac, which is 110 feet in diameter. Is being completely unused. At the moment, we essentially have sole responsibility for maintaining aviation drive. No one else uses it. It's gated at the far end with a little red bar as shown. We are the only property owners using all of aviation drive. We've got 20 feet width of pavement and 110 foot diameter cul-de-sac. And although Jim Goldman envisioned perhaps five houses being served in there, as I say, that's just, that's not what's happening. And frankly, us and the neighbors would love to see that sort of shrunk and scaled back from being this big enormous road that no one uses.
To being a driveway.
To being a drive, private driveway, exactly, which is what it is right now. That's, that is how it's functioning. Again, no one else uses it to access their property. The access to the hangar, which is the Minushkins', and then to Jody.
Eastwood.
Eastwood, thank you. Used to be the Monroe Lot. Their access is along the runway itself.
That gray strip.
Down here, talking about this lot here.
That's the former Monroe Lot, exactly, 91. And that lot is where the hangar is, that's right.
They both have driveway access to what is the runway.
Oh, look, correct. And a note here, the labeling is incorrect. It labels the runway here as aviation drive. And that's wrong. It is the dashed right-of-way up above, which is aviation drive, as labeled on the subdivision plan that you formally dealt with. And that's off the tax maps. And unfortunately, Google Maps and other sources have picked this up as well. So there's a, there's a road naming and even a street number issue at each, but separate topic. So those are the only two properties other than ours that use any of aviation drive. And they simply use the portion from Cook Farm Road into the fork, where you go right on the runway.
From here to here, and then they drive this way.
Correct, yes, thank you, exactly, that's right. They both do have deeded rights on the back of their lot to use the corridor of aviation drive. And there's, although they have no intent to use that. They both indicated they're gonna continue to use their passenger vehicle access along aviation drive.
And none of the lots north of that have any rights to that?
No, Cook Farm Road lots.
Ridgeview Drive?
No, they do not have rights, correct. To the airstrip or to Ridgeview Drive, to aviation drive, excuse me.
So this lot right here has rights to this area.
Well, they own it, more than rights.
They own it, yes. And you have rights across their.
Correct.
You have right of way.
That's right.
And as far as this property goes, it terminates at this boundary. And this property owns the property and you have right-of-way across the back of there.
That's correct.
Right, and they, the, that second property you were pointing out, the lot 91, Eastwood, it, its deed says there's just a right-of-way to get to their lot. It doesn't give them a right-of-way beyond their lot, because there was no need to, for them to go into the cul-de-sac?
That's what 91 deed says?
Correct.
And what does this one say?
And it was the owner of all of it. And it, they reserved a right-of-way to cross to get to their other land. And then they sold that other land to us.
This up here?
You're right.
Well, no, actually, no.
No, the lot 92-1 and 92-2.
92-1, 2, and 3.
Oh, this lot owners reserve the right to get all the way to here.
To 91, 2, and 3.
And that's written in the deed.
Correct.
Because if they, the history is easier when you envision everything basically south of aviation drive as being one lot. And they sold lot 91. So they took out that piece and reserved the right just to cross it to get to what is 91, 1, 2, and 3. The lots to the south of the runway do not have vehicle access there. They have aviation access only to the runway.
So my questions are, have you approached these two landowners about relinquishing their rights?
We know, we have talked to them about, about aviation drive and that they want us to maintain it. And that, you know, they, they don't want other, you know, they're not planning to use it for something. We haven't, you know, talked about a specific waiver.
Yeah. Friendly relationship, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They still the trails.
Yeah, no, yeah, because we've spoken to them and again, we have a shared interest in trying. They don't, they wanna reduce usage back there. It is their backyard. And so they don't want it to be an open road. And so we do have an informal agreement with them that we will maintain the gate, which is shown there.
Right, now there's constantly people back there.
Yes, well, recreationally, yes, absolutely, that's right. And we've tried to prevent vehicles from being back there because we don't want other problems that might occur with driving, yeah.
And in the winter, we don't want tracks on the ski trails that people produce.
Yeah, because we groom the trail from the beginning.
Right, yeah.
And Jody Eastwood skis up our trails with her dog and Ian helps to maintain the trails and.
Yeah, what I would say is, there's been a lot of unleashed dogs.
Okay.
Which could potentially become a problem. I own the property north of.
And Jim lives up there.
Oh, okay.
Uh, what is it?
One.
No, 109 is the one that's mostly hidden there. But anyways, there's a lot of times there's dogs coming onto our property.
Really?
We have birds and.
Ah, boy, okay. There was one very fancy dog that came from one of those houses out to visit our whiskey jar, so she's already always attached to us.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, there's certainly, there are a couple of people who do frequent the trails from that side. We publicly, we ask everyone to use Tin Mountain Conservation Center as the public access to the trails. Out of deference to all of the neighbors you included, we are discouraging people from, from parking there and making them inaccessible.
Yeah, I remember last year there was one dog that was causing scare problems.
Oh, was it?
But I'm, I'm sorry, it's happening this year.
Yeah.
So thank you for giving us the overview. So that's kind of the preliminary consultation again. So thank you for doing it again. And then the matter at hand before us right now is the application for merger of 92-2 and 92-3. Accent all the other plans of building a house, right? So we would just be looking at this and all of what was just discussed about future plans really has no bearing on this. I mean, we can think about it, but in terms of this application, this stands alone. So just as consideration. So does anyone have any questions or things you wanna talk about as far as the lot merger application?
Yeah, I think you're gonna have to send this to the legal counsel because this subdivision, this three-lot subdivision was approved from this. You know, they built it to town specs. There's a lot of discussion about this cul-de-sac. In a fire, in a fire truck, I think the planning board made it up by three meetings talking about having a cul-de-sac in place to access these lots. You know, I'm not comfortable adjusting the approved set of plans. I mean, it, it needs to go through the legal to see if we can even talk about it. Because I don't, I would think you might not be able to change it from the original three, but that's a legal thing. So until that, I can't and won't offer much of an opinion on it until they say it's even able to do it.
Yeah, and to that end, I did email all of the information that Smart and Rudy have provided to our legal. And I haven't heard back yet, so waiting on that.
I mean, this was a, just the background of this approval for this subdivision. It took, I think it was six months. And there was a lot of discussion about road standards and widths and cul-de-sacs and fire department was involved. And so, you know, and there's a lot of history on it. I mean, there's just a lot of information on it to the town. So if, if the town attorney has to look at it, I think that that's.
Does, does anyone, there's a curious bit of history that most of the work on this was done some years ago, almost 10 years ago. But the plan was only approved and recorded in '23, I think it was? Which I, which was the time that Jim Goldman decided to sell the property. So I'm guessing something came to light at that point and they realized it hadn't been recorded?
Exactly, yes. So before my time, and then in my time, it came to light that it hadn't been filed.
Okay.
We worked to get that.
Okay, so, sorry.
And, and, because my question was, the town road standards and so forth say that if a lot, sorry, if something accesses only two lots, it's just a driveway and doesn't have to meet town road standards. So I guess that was, you know, that's what I'm thinking might apply to us.
Town of the Organses do allow for a shared driveway to have two residential properties on it. Anything more than that becomes a minor subdivision or a major subdivision depending on scale.
Where is, where does the right-of-way for 112, a mislabeled lot, where's that right-of-way? Does it go through by 106?
That is a long aviation drive. This is our, part of our right-of-way. We have two. There is a drive, what we call a drive, where Sean has pointed, is an easement across the back of this lot that arches up here.
An easement or a right-of-way?
It's a right-of-way.
Right-of-way, yeah.
Attained from prior owner of 106.
Right.
And when we first bought the property, the the property came with a 30-foot, 35-foot right-of-way across the back of the Ridgeview Drive lots. And when Jim Goldman was building just parallel to that, he, it was agreed that we all would use that rather than building something parallel along the back of the Ridgeview Drive lots.
The other thing, I think that, so legal, I agree totally, we are needing legal to review this. And then the other thing to me is that these existing rights-of-way, I would think would have to be relinquished in order to, I don't know about in order to do this merger. Maybe they do, maybe they don't, that's legal. But certainly for you to develop in the middle of said right-of-way, the rights would have to be.
Well, I think that's the key issue. We haven't found any deed that grants anyone else rights to use the cul-de-sac for any purpose.
Well, I thought.
It might have been intended, but no.
Judith Rudy was just saying that this lot here had rights all the way through to these lots here.
No, well, yes, I'm sorry, they do. And we own those three lots there and this one.
Right.
Right, and yes, Ian had a right to go all the way through before he sold to us. So I guess, what would we be asking them to waive? Because it, using what's at the back of their lot that they own, that part of aviation drive, it's fine for them to use. So I guess, we, except they don't wanna use it, they want us to maintain it, but anyway. So we'd be asking for them to waive the right to ever use the cul-de-sac, is that how you're thinking, Sean?
Yeah, to cancel the right-of-way or release the right-of-way.
Well, I'm just trying to clarify, but which right-of-way? For example, Minushkin owns the land in question under that right-of-way. They don't need a separate right-of-way to access that. Yes, they, and, and that's all they have a right to. They don't have a right to access beyond that point.
This is Minushkin, 91?
Uh, no, that's Eastwood now, to the left, the hangar is Minushkin.
But right now, there's five lots that have access off of aviation.
No, that's what's confusing.
There's lots that abut aviation. Well, there's four lots that abut. And then Arthur has access.
There's the first one, which I don't know the number, is it part of 92?
Yes, that's right.
The first one, then there's 91. They both have potential access if they chose to.
Yes.
92-1, 92-3, and then 112 all have access off of aviation.
That's correct, yes.
92-3 is, on that map, is just the cul-de-sac, the four or five acres, but.
Yes, there are those, there are five lots. Some of the driveway regulations refer to a number of dwellings served. So there's a, there is a discrepancy. Some is a strict lot count, and certainly Jim Goldman was trying to fully build out the road, if you like, and allow that there would be five dwellings there. But the reality is, we've got only one dwelling actually being proposed. So if you back up and if we were building this from scratch, we would only be here asking for approval for private driveway. So I do, I understand your point of what other rights do people have and making sure those aren't compromised. And the one comment I do keep coming back to is, no one's got deeded rights to the cul-de-sac. Whatever the intent might have been for the cul-de-sac, they didn't follow through on it. Personally, just my observation, I think that was probably a deficiency when the five-lot subdivision was approved. I think the deed wasn't properly passed to give multiple parties the rights to that.
I have this question, but do your own properties, these ones you own, do your own properties have deeded rights to this cul-de-sac? No.
No, you just own it. No, there's no deeded rights.
So this property here, 112, 92-1.
That's right.
Has no deeded right-of-way.
There must be a section of that that's a right-of-way. It, it only has a deeded right-of-way to this boundary by virtue of that right-of-way. This is never called out as a right-of-way to any party ever. The land was simply sold separately.
So if you do away with the cul-de-sac, 92-1 has no access to it as a lot?
Yeah, well.
Yeah, but these lots were.
But it could still cross.
These lots were subdivided, but these lots were created based on this plan.
Yeah?
Yes.
So we can't, you, we can't sit here and adjust a plan that was already voted on and approved from. So it has, I mean, I can get, we can talk about it, we can all offer our opinions on it. But until the town attorney says what we can do, it's kind of a waste of everybody's. I mean, I understand what you're trying to do, but, but it's kind of a waste of everybody's time to just sit here and give our opinions on it. We got, obviously got a right on, look on the easement issue. But the cul-de-sac, if it's not, if it's not listed, it's still on this approved plan that created all these lots, so.
Totally agree.
And I guess the way we were looking at it is if, since we own 92-1 and 92-2 and 112, we know that if we wanted to sell those separately or we wanted to, somebody wanted to build a dwelling on it, they'd need approval all over again to, to build any, any dwelling there if, if the cul-de-sac is built upon. But we're willing to do that because those lots are just gonna be part of the trails and have.
So I certainly agree with the comments about the intent of the subdivision plan and the approval. And I think we're all sort of looking at the same dilemma here. There are some faults in, in what happened. And so quite aside from the strict merger application, I'm certainly, we're welcoming your input. What can we do to fix this or unravel this in some way? Is there some way that we might even need to revise that subdivision approval to recognize what exists on the ground and what's been deeded to everyone's satisfaction? We're perfectly, you know, that would be great.
Yes, so the, the process will be, we're gonna have legal counsel advise us. And we'll share that with you, and that will be the path forward, whatever legal counsel presents. Because none of us are ready to say we are the experts and that's the final word.
Sure, maybe a question to the county council is how do, how does this get defined as a shared driveway?
Yeah.
Just so there is, if there is a path forward to it.
And we want you to be able to use the land to the maximum extent of your rights.
Yeah.
We also recognize that right now you own this land, at some point you won't, and it's gonna get sold to someone else. And so it's really about the property, not about the property owner.
I understand, and that is.
And where we have to protect the town's interests, that we don't go this step forward and now you have to go three steps back to undo another mess that we created, so.
But I think, you know, what we're trying to understand is we've already got this dilemma. We have this overbuilt road that at the moment, no one is using. It is just gated. It's, it's a woods road, basically. And all the parties involved, all those with ownership, would sort of like to see it phased back, decommissioned, not decommissioned, but, but shrunk in some manner.
And I suspect the answer is gonna be, since you own these properties and have this intent, that if, if, if you're able to get all right-of-ways relinquished or canceled, or whatever the proper word is.
Yes.
And then you're gonna have to merge at least these two, if not more of them, to make it fit into the town ordinance. That's my guess.
To bring it down to two lots, is that what you're hypothesizing?
Yeah, but that's my guess. We'll see where it goes. But again, we want you to be able to use your land to the maximum extent of land rights.
Yeah, I understand. And by the way, we certainly would be building further back on 92-1 or 2 if they were a square foot of flat ground. But, you know, they, they've already done that work and spent $200,000 leveling that cul-de-sac. So we would like to use the ground where they've done all the engineering, they put the drainage in the ground. There won't be any additional impervious surface from us building there. It's all gonna be within that footprint. And to be told, basically, we've gotta preserve 110-foot cul-de-sac and basically gate it to make sure the public doesn't come in in order to build 25 feet off on lot two in a hillside with water coming out of the ground. It's insane. So not that this procedure is, I fully understand what you're, you're facing here. So I think it's an interesting question about whether, well, what you're asking legal counsel is very interesting. Because I'm not sure what they can come back and tell you. I mean, there's multiple questions. They can look at the deed research, as we have done, and confirm or find something we missed.
Well, what, so what we're gonna ask legal is what you're presenting. So what you're presenting right now is this. This is something we can go to them with.
Good.
And then we can tell them all your kind of plans in general. They might give some advice, but. And, and just to be clear, and I know it already is clear, we exchanged email about it, that the cost for legal counsel will come back, will be billed to you as the applicant. So the town of Albany taxpayers do not pay for legal counsel for this, that, or the other. The applicant pays for, the applicant pays for town's counsel for these things. So I think that was clear in the email. If it's not, if it's supposed to clear in the email, I wanna make it very clear right now.
Well, you certainly mentioned that some matters requiring town counsel would be at our expense.
Yes.
I'm a little concerned that something as simple as a lot merger, normally simple, shouldn't be something that requires us to cover legal counsel.
So we can take it very narrowly, well.
Because there's an argument here that that five-lot subdivision should not have been approved. Because the deeds were not in place to grant the access for all five lots, which is what you thought existed. I understand that. That wasn't done. And frankly, there is a history, there's lots and lots of deeds on this property with lots of technical errors and faults that were corrected.
All throughout the country.
It, yeah. So, so in this instance, we've got a subdivision plan for five lots that really shouldn't exist.
But it does.
I know. I know.
But it does, but it does, so. Your opinion doesn't really matter on it, like it has to go to legal, they have to look at it. Because the next person sitting in your chair is gonna sue us if they don't like what we did if it wasn't right. So we have to be right, this has been a lots merger for a long time and long enough that, you know, it just has to go there, so.
Yeah.
Like it or not, I mean, I get it, I mean, I don't like spending too many of my own lawyers either, but it's just something that's gotta happen, so.
But I, you know, I have a feeling legal counsel is not gonna answer this question. They can answer your specific question, but not resolve the issue.
The question that was raised that makes a lot of sense to me is how can this become a a private driveway, basically? That if we can get all the way to that bottom line instead of just stopping with who has access rights or doesn't, that they may be the same thing, you know, it all sounds the same or it all sounds different.
I agree, so I I wanna ask this to be pretty clear. Right now, what legal counsel has before them is this.
Yes.
I did give them all the stuff for context, but the question is just about this because that's all that's officially before us.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Um, and I'll stay in contact with you to see how far you want legal counsel to get to. Do you want them to get to that answer? What will allow you to develop in the way you want to develop?
Okay.
Um, but for right now, I ask legal counsel to address just this.
Okay.
That's great.
We appreciate it, sorry for the dilemma.
No, it's interesting, it's something to think about. No apologies, thank you for talking, thank you for, thank you for just going through the process.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'll put that in here.
Okay.
And hopefully by next month's meeting, we'll have something to work over on.
Thank you all.
Have a good night, bye-bye.
Bye.
It's interesting. Land use question for the land use board. Huzzah, that's what we're here for. Pull up agenda, the only other really thing is minutes and then if anyone has anything else, otherwise we'll move on. Getting out of here. Oh, yes, we have a bunch of minutes. December ninth, January thirteenth, meeting canceled, no minutes there in February, so we have two sets of minutes. Should I pull them up to make sure we all know who was where, when?
Who was ninety-one?
December ninth. It was Curtis, Brian, Morris and myself that were here, so.
Make a motion to approve those now.
Nice, I second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Staying? Motion carries for with an extension. And. Let's trace that again. Oh. February tenth, last month. It was Amalia, Morris and I, so if you're planning to abstain, I guess I'll table this one until Morris is here to vote on it. Yes, tabling this one. Look back at the agenda, but I think that's about it. In a general sense, I do wanna bring up the ordinances and changes, we've been talking about this. So I kind of brought forward the idea to have Terry Banford, a professional, help us through the process. That was not accepted or, so the process is on us. So how do you all wanna do this process? Are we gonna start workshop where we have extra meetings and we're reading through the ordinances and figuring it out ourselves? What do you guys wanna do? How are we, how are we addressing the gaps in the ordinances?
I mean, the thing I had with her is it just seemed like, I mean, the problem is the consultants, they just wanna go through and change everything and she didn't seem very local to this area. She seemed kind of, you know, I think we should just address the issues that we had at hand. We had, we had three or four things that were troublesome, so just deal with those. I mean, I don't know, I'm not, you know, I'm kind of a, I believe in having pretty, you know, taxpayer-friendly ordinances, so I just didn't get that from some of her background. So that's why I was against against it. We're not Vermont, we're not New York, you know, we're not, you know, we're not Massachusetts, we're New Hampshire, New Hampshire's a little different. So I think, to me, I think we should address some of the just, you know, there was one that dealt with some cluster housing and it was a kind, you know, kind of a contradiction of, you know, two acre minimum lots and then it had a line about cluster housing, which just needs to be taken out, gotten rid of, that that's could even be a possibility, but it wasn't. And there wasn't a lot. You know, we we didn't have, that was really the only issue I've seen us get into. And even then, it wasn't, they changed it and kind of agreed with us. Because obviously, if they didn't agree with us, it wouldn't have pushed it further, so. But I mean, it's, we just mark it up and have the town council, but we're too late for the town meeting now anyway. So I mean, just address it specifically with a few of the items. We can sit through five workshops, but I think we could all mark it up in a matter of a half hour and deal with the majority of what issues we got. That was my opinion, why I didn't think spending ten, fifteen thousand dollars on a whole revamp was necessary.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that overall. You know, in our business, an engineer can look at this plan and pick it apart. So anything can be found if you pay the person to find something. You know, it may not necessarily be a problem, but will we think this needs to be changed? You know, so that was kind of my thinking was, sure, they're gonna find a lot of stuff, but is it really a problem? And like her said, I think we've run into, especially with cluster, you know, probably easier to address that. You know, single, you know, session or whatever it is, so that's what my thinking.
Then we had that other issue.
Well, the ADUs, yeah.
Yeah, ADUs, just clarify that and get something on Twitter.
Yeah. That's, I would assume just a matter of writing a definition.
Right.
Well, definitions is an issue in the document because I have tried to read it and I go back and forth, back and forth to see, you know, what, you know, whoever wrote it that means and how one concept goes or get, you know, change it a little bit in another section. But on the other hand, I don't want to get a vote for or against or anything like that because she's, we had a relationship when I was living in Vermont, I know her. And we were chatting, Julian had given us access to the Zoom and all the time we were chatting about dogs and things and remember this and remember that. Then for me, my opinion is like a kind of bias, so I'd rather not, you know, uh, you know, because it's my friend, yeah, it's a, I think it's the, the, you know, my, the the good thing, you know, to be accepting the decision for me, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think Miss Banford's proposal is off the table right now, um, so it's on us, so.
Yeah, I just think identify three things, if that's it, or four things and just address them.
We need to put the time in, so I'd say to each of us members, we need to read through and probably individually mark up what we think is lacking or has holes or is vague or whatever issues we think they are and then come together and kind of go through line by line and and then cobble something together. I'm apprehensive about it because that's the way it's been done and that's what's gotten us to some ordinances that had a lot of contradictions and poorly written things and gaps. But that's, you know, we can do our best, that's, so that's what we're.
I just don't think we need to make a massive project out of it, Sean. I mean, I think we could do some work on our own and have one session and just identify where we wanna be and vote on it or do whatever within within the board. You know, I'm not, I mean, I'm not gonna sit through ten meetings talking about ordinances for one issue we've had in twenty-five years.
Yeah.
I'm just not gonna do it.
And these ordinances, when we redo them, they need to go through the town meeting, right? So this is a goal for for a year from now to have some things written in this. I don't see why we couldn't do that in our regular meetings over the next year, you know?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
And it, should should they be run past a council?
Well, I think what you wanna do is just get like a general set of where we think we have some vulnerabilities and I mean, I think that from the psychman's board, you will say some of the situations you've had.
Right.
And you, like, that's a, that's an issue.
Yep.
From the the plan and the subdivision requirements or subdivision review, we had an issue of some conflicting language in our ordinances, just address that. Okay, that's two things.
Right.
I don't really know of a whole lot more.
Right.
You know, I mean, everybody can read it, they might have a little different thought process, they might have a little different political thought process, what's what they wanna do here, what they wanna do there. And that's fine, we all have different opinions or, but I mean, we literally had pretty minimal issues. I mean, I've been in this town a long time and as far as being involved in many different projects and we have had very few. I mean, this was, this thing right here was, this this approval, the planning board was a little bit of a mess on it. They struggled, they really struggled. They got through it and it got approved, but you know, you know, so so, you know, there there are, have been issues, but I mean, we've, we've, I mean, from the psych boards end of it, you've had pretty, pretty, pretty quiet.
Right, yeah.
The road, you know, end of it, pretty quiet, you know, we just have a few things in my mind, but I mean, that's just my thing. Bit of opinions behind, you know, I just say, address those few little things, save the taxpayers some money. Just one voice of five.
I I would like to make a suggestion because, you know, I am the queen here, yeah? I don't have to say anything, yeah, but I, I mean, if you, people that have the experience that you have been in here for so long, you can pinpoint things, you know, from the memory, you don't have to read or anything. Maybe, you know, it's like a direction where to go and we get more focused in that and, uh, but I, for me, I have, you know, like, I started to read the whole thing and I say, oh my God, you know, this is, uh, the first thing that I found that they were, is that they use the same name and describe it in different ways through the document and that worries me because as a new person, if I, if I put this lapis in today and next meeting, I will call it lapis, but I put another word for lapis, you know, an article to write, you know, then you would think I'm crazy, but this is what I read, you know, lapis and article to write, then what is the difference, yeah? I mean, it's, I mean, I just give an example, but it would be easier to, if you have like in the memory, like you immediately hear, I was surprised, I didn't know that that closet has, uh, plants and things, I didn't know anything about this one, yeah? And I am just listening to you, then I mean, you you have something very vulnerable that is the history, yeah? I mean, I don't mind what I say that you are old, but you have, but you are born in here.
He's been around a while.
It has been, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that there's only three things that we need to address, I just think there's three things that we need to discuss. Because we have really talked about this for six other months.
Right.
You know, so like, and shame on us, we could have totally just dealt with this and got it on the town horn and it should have been on there. We probably should have gotten it done, um, you know, so I just, just knock out those things, get it done, so just behind us. And if there's other issues, we might find other issues just going through it. That's all.
Well, and I think it should be a, an ongoing, I think it should be an ongoing thing as we find things. I mean, we've got a whole year to get this prepped and ready, so we work on two things and if something else comes up, we just talk about it at the meeting and address it.
I think we should tackle the short-term rental problem.
For other towns or us?
Just kidding.
We don't need to be having legal fees like that with all our neighbors and neighboring towns, so.
I would, I do wanna talk about, I mean, I tell you true, I learned something new this past with this age agenda is the smart radio, I mean, the sound, what is the sound thing, you know, the, yeah, the smart radio and the sound of the trucks and things like that. I have to go to the two to to hear the sound, yeah? Is it here or?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's kind of Route sixteen stuff, provision of air brake brakes.
Yeah, 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 they they forty-five and the air brake, Jake brake, that's it, yeah?
This is, any updates on what's happening with sixteen?
The only thing that's happening is rumble strips.
Yeah.
No.
In the middle or on the sides, Cole?
Um, I've got a map that shows you where they are in the middle and the sides, it's, it's.
There are some on the sides.
Yeah. Yeah, but they're not rumble, they're called a mumble, I don't know if you've seen this, the newest, latest.
I have no, I just know that in Alton, they put rumble on the middle and the other sides and they took them all out.
So at the last meeting, they showed, you you were there, right? They showed the the radiuses of the the strip that they put in and, um, it's not as loud.
By by significant.
Yeah, by a significant amount, yeah, so it's, um, I don't know how to describe it, but it's, it's a mumble, it's a mumble.
It's just not as deep emerges from.
Yeah, it's less of a square hard.
Yeah, the radius on it, so, yeah, but it's still as effective for the driver, but it is much quieter.
All right, well, I don't have any further business. Hearing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.